Now to item 8.1, discussion of the city charter.
I guess that is me. So at your last May 6 meeting, the council was presented with a draft of a charter, which was admittedly longer than the charter that the council had approved at its meeting of April 22nd. In fact, it went from two pages to 10 pages. And the revised draft was crafted in a manner to reflect the manner in which the city currently operates by either making specific references to the provisions of the general laws in the state or mirroring language in the city's municipal code as a means to limit the authority of the council in areas that are deemed municipal affairs. As the council is aware and has heard, the charter is an instrument of limitation on the powers of a city. Once the city of Emeryville becomes a charter, should it be approved by the voters, then the council is free to exercise those powers as it sees fit in the areas of municipal affairs. To the extent the charter does not place limitations on those powers, then the council can legislate by ordinance however it may choose in those areas. And without constraints in the charter, the council has unfettered authority in areas of municipal affairs. In the council's discussions leading up to where we are tonight regarding the charter city process, the council was clear that they wanted the charter to in fact constrain the power of the council in the areas of municipal affairs to those prescribed by the general laws of the state with the exception of the area of taxation. And the concern that I'm raising is that the short charter of April 22nd may not achieve that desired result and instead results in a grant to the council of broad authority, which again may not be consistent with the council's direction. As part of the charter process, a measure is presented to the Emeryville voters and the obligation of a city attorney is to provide an impartial analysis of the measure which is published as part of the voter pamphlet. And as such, the city attorney has a duty to the voters, which is over and above their duty to the council, to describe the legal effect of the adoption of the charter. Thus, the underlying concern is the reality that the city attorney will be obligated to describe the legal effect of the charter to the voters, which may not be favorable to the council's intended outcome. And so while I appreciate the concern expressed by the council that too long of a charter may scare voters away, I do believe that we can further refine the May 6 draft to achieve the desires of the council of a relatively short charter, but in a way that adequately imposes the constraints on the power of the council in the areas of municipal affairs with the exception of taxation as originally directed. As I alluded to at our prior meeting, I have been consulting with Manuela Albuquerque, former city attorney of Berkeley. The city of Berkeley was a charter city for over 100 years. As the Berkeley city attorney, Ms. Albuquerque has had numerous opportunities to analyze the legal effect of charter provisions and how they constrain the authority of cities in the areas of municipal affairs. And Ms. Albuquerque is with us this evening, is available to answer any questions you might have. And finally, I would note that in your packet, the council has been provided with several other short charters from other California jurisdictions which remain in effect as far as we are aware. But again, I think if appropriately directed by the council, I'm confident that we can craft a short charter of our own that serves the needs of the council.
Okay, thank you. Comments, questions?
Mayor Asher.
Yeah.
I have a question for Mr. Biddle. Is there any history of litigation on any of these, and thank you for providing us with these very short, to the point, charters of various cities. Is there any record of any kind of litigation against these charters?
Well, I didn't provide the charters to you that are in your packet. I believe other staff did. But, so I can't answer that question. I do know that there was a previous, I'm not sure if the charter of the city of Vista is in here, but I know that that was subject to litigation. And again, the litigation in the area regarding the city of Vista, and I suspect to the extent there has been litigation in any of these charters, it's really a, it's really litigation that is taking issue with a specific provision. And in the case of the city of Vista, it was a charter that was enacted with the real intended purpose of being, of making sure that the city did not have to pay prevailing wages on a project. And so that charter was passed, it was challenged by various union contracting interests, challenging that provision, and they did not prevail.
But they were challenging one provision.
They were, they're challenging one provision.
So would it be fair to say, and maybe Manuela, you can jump in here, is there any history at all in the state of California where a charter city, which has been chartered, has the charter been overturned?
No, Councilmember Davis, because this tendency of writing these very brief charters is a very new phenomenon, as general law cities were trying to change to charter cities to avoid particular problems. So the city of Vista case that your city attorney alluded to, the issue there was, does the prevailing wage law that was adopted by the legislature apply to a charter city? The Supreme Court did not look at the substance of the charter. It was a charter city rights issue. Municipal affairs prevail under the California Constitution. For charter cities, all cities have home rule under Article 11, Section 7, but charter cities have special greater powers of home rule. So as cities encountered particular issues, particularly prevailing wage, where because of budget constraints, they were going to have to pay much more money for their projects, they said, no, we're not subject to that state law. And that's a case that was litigated, and the California Supreme Court said, yes, under Article 11, Section 5, this is called a municipal affair, which is a special right of charter cities, and the charter city's right not to pay prevailing wage prevails over the state law. So that's what that case was about, not the content of charters. But what started happening, pretty much all the charters I've ever seen that haven't, and I currently represent cities all around the state on either litigation or advice, and in fact, you'll recall, I was here giving you some advice on some election matters three years ago. Mayor Asher, you were not here yet. I came just before you arrived, but, and currently I defend cases against cities on election issues and help advise them on these measures. What you'll see of these charters is a pretty much, what charters are, if you think of them like this, is they're a constitution of the city. Normally, other cities, general law cities like you are today, the spine of what the city can and can't do is established by a series of very elaborate state laws. So you never have to think about them, if you're a general law city, they're just there, and they constrain you irrespective of whether you're passing any ordinances. So what I understood from, so the charters of most cities, just like Berkeley, San Angeles, San Diego, Oakland, I represent Downey, Alameda, Stockton, they have that structure in their charters. Because the basic law under the California Constitution is either you're a general law city, in which case you're constrained by this mosaic of laws, and it tells you things like, how many council members? How were they elected? There are many details that are already in state law. How are elections conducted? How do you nominate people? Initiative and referendum? All these details are in general law. Now, if you're a charter city, where is that law? There's no rule that says, if you don't put anything in your charter, you default to the general law. It's like, then there's no rules. That's, that's the concern I had when I looked at your draft charter, where I think there's been this very recent, modern tendency to put almost nothing in the charter. Well, the legal effect of putting nothing in the charter is, council does whatever it wants. So the charter that you had didn't even say, how many council members there are, when are they elected, what are their terms, how are people nominated? So what I, when I saw that, and I actually haven't seen one quite that vague, perhaps except for one city, that doesn't at least adopt by reference the general law. So what I recommended to Mr. Biddle is, what I understand, you've asked him and the city attorney's offices, look, we want to operate the way we have operated as a general law city. We want the same number of council members, same terms, same rules, that's what we want. But there are certain areas in which we want to have the powers of charter cities. For example, the powers over municipal taxation, where, you know, the legislature can't start coming in and constraining you. You're already constrained by the California Constitution under 218. That will remain the same whether you're a charter city or a general law city. So the kinds of things that need to be in there is, if you want five council members, it should say that. If you want four-year terms, it should say that. If you want them staggered, it should say that. So that, those are the kinds of details that need to be in there because I have two concerns. One concern is, and let me just switch, you've all heard about all the scandals about the city of Bell. You remember all that? And how they were charter city, and they started paying their council members exorbitant amounts of money. And there was this huge scandal about how much money was being paid of the small city with working class people. And the legislature was very offended and started adopting procedures. The procedures you're following today with the two hearings, all of those were imposed because the legislature was concerned that the voters had no idea what happened with that charter. They had no idea that at the end of the day, going from a general law city to a charter city in Bell meant you could start paying your council members $200,000, $100,000 to show up, you know, maybe once every two months. And most of the people in the community paid much less money. So the legislature said, wait a minute, we want a very transparent process, and they impose this requirement. And if you have a charter with nothing in it, you never have to amend it because the council can just do anything at once. It doesn't by ordinance. So that is not what you intend. That's, that's what I know, right? From Mr. Biddle, I know that what you want is what you have now in terms of the structure. So now, where are the rules that say you have to be like that in your charter? That's where they have to be. So that is the purpose. I just wanted you to understand, that is the purpose, is to give you precisely what you're asking for. And I see how it's intimidating, you go from two pages or three pages to like 12 pages, and you're concerned. Mayor Asher, I heard your comments. But voters are saying, what are you doing? This is some new thing that you're imposing on us. So I think we can achieve that objective, which are much shorter. I already think I was telling Mike how we can do that. And we can still make it clear to the voters, for example, I've written FAQs for cities on exactly what's happening. Mr. Biddle has to write a city attorney's analysis, 500 words. I think you can make that clear simply without, so achieve your objective to keep what you have with certain parts of charter cities in the structure, not have it too long, and be able to clearly say to the voters, look, this is not some new thing. We're just shifting to a charter city with the same structure. That's the bottom line.
I have a comment and a question. So looking, for example, at the charter of the town of Truckee.
What page is that on?
That's on 91 and 92. And, okay, so they drafted this in 94, looks like it might have gone to the ballot in 95. Specifically on page 92, Article 4, General Laws, "The town shall be governed by the general laws of the state of California, except for set forth in this charter, in the Constitution of the State of California. The town shall have the power and authority to exercise any and all rights and privileges." This is a, this is a two-page document, and I'm wondering if this is what we're looking for, this paragraph right here.
That's what I'm, it's by reference. We're saying, we like the way the city operates now with a council manager form of government. We want to continue that, and we want to continue doing the things we're doing, but we want these additional powers.
You already have the power, without saying anything in your charter, to avail yourself of general law. But your charter will not constrain you to do that. That's the issue. The issue is, with language like this, are you required to follow the general law? No. That's, that's what I'm trying to say.
It says, "The town shall be governed..."
Shall be governed.
"...by the general laws of the state of California, except for the items set forth in the charter."
Right.
Well, but then you have a contradictory paragraph in the next section that says, you can, section 500, says...
Oh, to speak into the mic, Ms. Albuquerque?
Oh, excuse me.
Yeah, thank you.
Yes, I think it comes off. Your Article 4 and Article 5 are contradictory.
Okay, so this is, this is saying that you could go beyond the general law. Can't we have something, if we're doing, if you, in Article 5, you do something under interpretation and severability, and you say that the language is intended to be restrictive rather than exclusive and limiting?
Exclusive or limiting, yeah.
Should be construed to allow the town to exercise its power? I mean, I, I don't, charter cities do not have to recreate everything out of whole cloth. They don't have to be such a distinct animal. It's, it's, I can't imagine that the law and the way you govern your city can't be derivative of a general law.
It absolutely can. There's no dispute about that. It's a question, is how do you get there in your, the language of your charter, that's all. So for example, the, there are various elements that, how many council members? And there can be a variety of different ones. Are you elected at large or by district? That's a permission that's given even to general law cities, so you have to put that in there, which is it. So saying that you can govern and having used general laws, that doesn't answer the structure of what you have right now. So you just put that in your charter, that's what you want. Five council members, elected at large, with staggered terms, nominated under state law, vacancies determined under state law. We just, just reference the sections. And then that gives you that, plus whatever powers you have as a municipal, as a charter city.
Jennifer? So right now, how is that determined? Since we are a general law city, how, where is that laid out?
In the general law, in a whole...
No, for Emeryville.
For Emeryville, it's laid out in a whole series of statutes. So how you nominate, for example, you're having elections, how you, initiative and referendum. It's only in the, it's only in...
Wouldn't those statutes still remain?
They don't apply to charter cities.
So I'm asking how Emeryville determines that we have five council members at large? Where is that written?
In the general law.
In the state's general law?
Yes.
But if you wanted to have seven by district?
Well, if you, if you do it by district, then you have to adopt a certain kind of ordinance. But you don't have unlimited discretion to do whatever you want. You can't do one council member, you can't do three council members, you can't...
So there are different choices, it's like a menu?
It's very, it's very limited, number of choices.
It's very limited, but the fact that Emeryville chose one and not a different one, where is that captured?
Well, actually, we learned it, it wasn't, it wasn't actually in your ordinance.
No? I can't.
Like why, maybe we just suddenly decide to have seven, because that's permissible under general law. How do we know that Emeryville only has five right now under general law?
Well, I thought it was in the code that we, I'm sure it's in the code.
Michael, you were in, I think we, we found out that in fact, the, the method of election is not prescribed by, in the, in the municipal code. Michael?
So I, I mean, I'm asking this specific question as an example, not because...
Right, right, right.
But I just want to understand, what is the, the difference between how we're doing something now under general law and how it could be prescribed under a charter? And why could it not reference, you know, everything that was in place prior to becoming a charter city will remain in place unless changed by a charter amendment?
There has to be continuity.
Something, some way to otherwise incorporate the, the current situation and how it's been determined, whether it's by ordinance, if it's code, et cetera. You're saying that the article that they have here that was referenced is not sufficient. It, it allows a general permission but is not limit.
Correct.
We wouldn't have to have a contradictory section right afterwards, which sounds like they made a mistake, including. But we could say that, you know, it is exclusive or limiting rather than permissive to otherwise, basically explain what the council's direction is.
It's not difficult to craft this. I'm just explain, I'm, I'm trying to tell you why it needs to be set out. Because in the absence of it being described, it can be described with reference to specific sections of the general law. You don't want to be incorporating by reference all aspects of general law, otherwise you will be giving up all the flexibility you do have as a charter city. So you are trying, that's why you're a charter city, is to have more home rule.
There was just one point that we wanted, I think, to use the charter city status to change, not a number of points.
And to retain prevailing wage, right? I mean, that was something we discussed.
That's, that's a change in state law, that's going to happen anyway.
We'll get out in front of it.
So, so I understand that your concern is length and confusion for the voters. The purpose is not to change your objective in any manner. The purpose is to get you to the objective in a manner that would actually accomplish that result. By not putting in constraints, it means that any council can change that at any time. Right now, you don't even have a provision on, requiring how ordinances are to be adopted. So for example, you could pass, you could pass an ordinance unanimously, one day. You don't have to post it, you don't have to wait for 30 days, you don't have to circulate it. So we're putting in the basic bones of what's in general law into your charter. Power of initiative and referendum, as provided by the Elections Code. That's what you want, you don't want to change that in any way, you want to make that explicit.
But referencing the general law isn't enough to do that?
Because there are all aspects of general law that you aren't going to want to, there, you just understand, the general law is very detailed and elaborate, and you don't know what you are constraining yourself to doing. And every time they change some little procedural requirement, they do something, you would be, it's not a good idea in general to adopt, say, every federal law by reference, or every state law. So what you're trying to do is, as I understand it, you're trying to operate with the constitutional structure, I'll call it that, the equivalent constitutional structure, which is not, you don't want to be saying every ordinance is going to be the same as somebody else's ordinances, but you want to make sure that how ordinances are currently adopted, you'll be adopting them the same way. Initiative and referendum, what are the key elements of what you do? You want to make sure the council manager form of government. Now, that is not a technical term, council manager form of government. It, it is accomplished by putting certain words in that say, the council sets the policy, and the city manager implements the policy. So you just need to put that in, as specified in the charter. So it doesn't have to be really long, what, but it should have these basic elements in it. It's easy to draft if, and, and so I wanted to tell you two things. One, to accomplish what you need, you need that structure, in my opinion. The other thing, along those lines, in addition, not constraining the council at all, I'm concerned that, we've not seen such a challenge anywhere, but I'm concerned that a challenge could be mounted that says, this is not a charter.
Well, but then there would be many cities, seven of which we have in our packet...
Yeah, or nine even here.
...who would be very invested in not having the, that overturned. I, I still don't believe that when people write a charter, that it has to lay out every, you are not creating a brand-new city. It's not as if your history goes away, it's not as if the ordinances that you have written go away. I, I think you have to presume, and every one of these charters that I'm looking at presumes a kind of continuity from one government to the next. And what it's laying out are these kind of slight changes and differences. And I, I, again, I, you know, they're, looking at these, I, I would want to maybe have some more context, maybe that would be helpful for me. Have they been challenged for any reason? Have they been altered for any reason?
They're not recent, I mean, at least six of them are more than 10 years old.
They are not recent.
Yeah, 20.
Are these inadequate? Are you saying these are inadequate?
The one, the one that you, we were just looking at, actually says it's constrained by the general law. The one that you had before, the one that was drafted for you, did not constrain you in that manner.
So if we added that one paragraph, you think it would be sufficient?
Well, that's, that's one, going to constrain you in ways that you possibly don't intend at all. And two, it's going to set up a conflict between that provision and Section 500. It's just, I, I would just try, what I would ask is that if, is, that we not be trying to draft based on somebody else's charter, that we, that we try to draft something for you based upon the basic principle of what you want. And if you don't want to incorporate every single general law in, that, that might be applicable to cities of every procedural nature that constrains you, you shouldn't adopt every general law. Because you don't know, you'll be, you'll have the seeming benefits of a charter city, and who knows in what manner you will have ended up constraining future city councils and your populace.
But that's what we wanted to do, as I understand it, that we now function under general law, and we would like those same rules.
Respectable how it's changed in the future?
Well, I mean, I guess that's a question because of the home rule and our concerns around the state, but...
But charters can be amended?
Charters can be amended, right? If there's something that's passed, and you're saying if the general law changes, that's the concern, but not under current general law?
For example, you have a lot of, the, the general law requires you to have certain officials, administrative officials, you must have certain people, positions. And you may not want to have those positions in the future. Now, if you don't mandate that by adopting general law, and you simply establish your council and your city manager, then you can adopt it by ordinance. You don't have to amend your charter. So, you know, I've been representing charter cities for a long time, and there's a lot of benefit from have, being a charter city in terms of home rule. So I recognize you don't want, you want to be sure that you're subject to prevailing wage, you're not trying to avoid any of that. You want to be subject to the consistency requirement, you can put that in explicitly, and then just put the other bones, you know, that, just the limited, if you want to be subject entirely to the contracts code, despite the fact that in any particular case, it might run you up, it might cause you to not be able to do, enter into a certain kind of, have a certain kind of flexibility on a contract. I'll tell you that I've advised the city of Berkeley, and we have more flexible requirements there. For example, the city of Berkeley was able to enter into a, adopt an ordinance that where a nonprofit group was helping to build a particular city improvement, it adopted an ordinance that said competitive bidding for such a project was higher than it would be, that the threshold to require competitive bidding was higher, and it was designed to enable this nonprofit developer, you know, a construction company partnership. Under the contracts code, you would not have been able to do that. Subsequently, Senator Hancock had to change the general law to let general law cities do it. So that's why, you know, I wouldn't advise you...
So then we would have been captured by that, right? I mean, it's, government and laws are evolving, moving, living things. And I, I just think that we're trying to, we're asking a... And I just think that we're trying to, we're asking a threshold question here. Can we get to this threshold of what can, do we want to go through with home rule? Do we want to go through with this very basic, simple template, knowing that we want to preserve the continuity of the general law city? We are not, I don't think, I haven't gotten the sense from our discussions that what we're trying to do is get out from underneath the general law requirement, not at all, right? We want some flexibility, we understand ourselves as operating for this way, this way for a long time, but things have changed on the state level, and we have to be able to adapt. And that's what we're trying to do. You know, trying to predict what's going to happen in terms of changing state law for general law cities, you know, we could game that out all day long, and then we're not going to have a charter. So I really think that we look at this, and I see nothing wrong with templates. I look at these seven documents, and I see that there's something to work from here, and I hope that we do that. These are concise, and I would need a much different kind of framing, context, evidence in order to have something much longer. I'm just, this is more what I'm looking for. Nora?
If I could comment, we're getting into circular conversations here. I think there's a real disjuncture between what the majority, in fact, all the members of this council want, and what we're hearing from our attorneys. And I place a high value on the professionalism of our attorneys. But in this instant, you are not listening to what the five people on this council are saying. We want a simple, one- or two-page charter to move forward to the public, let the public decide. But we want it simple enough that it can be on the ballot and that everybody can agree, it may not be perfect, but it's, as Jack says, it's a moving, living document. And I'd also like to comment on the theme that I keep hearing from both you, Manuela, and Mr. Biddle, about how if you don't have more teeth, the city council can run riot and be like Bell and get to be corrupt. I take umbrage at that. I think, this is a small town, and if there is bad things happening or corrupt things happening, the ability to remove council members is relatively easy. It is easy to have a recall in a small town. So I don't buy this issue if you don't put all this verbiage in the charter, that all of a sudden, these five people are going to run riot and, you know, get corrupt. I don't buy that, and I, it's a very offensive suggestion to me. What I'm trying to get at here is, and I, tell me if I'm wrong, guys, but we want a two- or three-page document, and I'd have to say, we want it in a timely fashion. We're already two weeks behind time in our proposed calendar. Am I speaking correctly, guys?
Let's get it done, yeah.
This is a difference of opinion between professional attorneys and elected officials, but we trump.
Mayor, Councilmember Davis, please, Mr. Biddle is not responsible for this, I am responsible for this advice. So if anyone is being tone deaf or not listening, that would be me. But what, what I, your charter didn't actually impose the limits of general law, the one that you had, so if that's what you want, we can certainly do that.
Yeah.
Good.
That's what you want. That's what I was trying to tell you, is, from the beginning, is that it didn't do what you wanted because it actually gave you unfettered discretion as opposed to limit you by general law, but we can do that.
Okay, good.
Okay.
Wait a minute, you can do that within two or three pages?
Well, yeah, I mean, enough with the verbiage, you know, during, going down through the
years, charters can add verbiage.
I'm hearing you loud and clear, councilmember.
You got that?
All right.
Did someone else want to comment? I thought I heard a...
No, I said, just see you back in two weeks.
See you in two weeks, okay. I mean, it's of interest to me that a number of the examples that we were given, they were all short, they were mostly more than 10 years old. They seem to have copied each other, because there's a lot of very similar language. And one section, which is the general law powers, seems to be exactly, I think, what we're asking for.
Right.
There is, however, in many of these, a construction and interpretation section that follows, that's the exact opposite of what we're asking for.
Right.
So I'm curious if you can construct the one sentence opposite of their construction and interpretation to go with the...
What we want.
...general law powers. Because I think it could be as simple as this, but just the reverse intention.
So, I'm going to repeat what I think you want me to do, to make sure I have that, or you want us to do.
Yes.
Have that straight, which is, you want to be constrained in all respects by the general law.
We don't see it as a constraint.
Yeah.
We operate well that way.
Yeah.
But by that, this is not like you want to tie yourself in knots, I don't mean it that way. I mean, you are either constrained, you're constrained by some law, all cities are. So you want to be constrained by the body of law, that's what we call the general law. But you want something more than that. So that something is taxation?
That's correct.
That's it.
And prevailing, well...
At the present time.
Yeah, at the present time.
The charter will allow us to...
Okay. So, so, instead of all municipal affairs, which are far beyond taxation, for example, gives you special plenary powers with respect to your police department, it gives you special plenary powers with respect to employees, you don't want to, you want to be constrained by general law with respect to all issues other than taxation.
That's correct.
Okay? But, just so you understand, that's what I told Mr. Biddle, the first version you had, it didn't constrain you at all. That's, that was my worry. If that's what you wanted, it didn't constrain you.
Constrains us.
Okay, constrain us, and in the simple way that we saw others.
Yes, many asked.
Thank you very much, but it's my fault, not Mr. Biddle's.
He's a big fella, he can take...
He's fine.
I made the mistake of getting my advice, but...
Mr. Biddle's fine.
Thank you very much.
Okay, public comment on this item, please.
Okay, yeah, so I listened to that whole conversation, and I'm not an attorney, obviously, but here I see in the packet, here's the town of Truckee, two pages, their charter. Palm Desert, two and a half pages. So you got Vuena Park, one page. Norco, two pages. Santa Maria, two pages. La Mor, one page, page and a half. City of Marina, like a page. So there's all these cities that have done this, exactly what you're asking, but for some reason, we can't. And so, it is absurd. And I'm happy that this was resolved here, and I, but it was kind of, I found the talk absurd, that we were, from the attorneys, I thought it was ridiculous. I mean, if so many other cities can do it, what is it about Emeryville that we can't? That question wasn't answered, but now apparently they got the message, and so that's good. I just wanted to alert everybody here, tonight before the meeting, I was at my home, and we received a call from an organization called, I think it was EMC.
C.
Yeah, EMC.
Research.
Research, that's right. I asked them, I wanted to ask questions about Emeryville, and I said, who's paying you? And they wouldn't say, but I figured it out, it was the city of Emeryville. Yeah, I figured it out after asking them several questions. They didn't want to ask me any questions, rather they only wanted to ask my wife, and it was selected by computer, I said, well, I'd like to answer, and no, you can't answer only the person that, your wife. So I sat and listened in to the questions, and just, everybody here should know this. One of the questions, well, several, but the first reference for the idea of a charter city was made by the telephoner, and my wife is not following this issue at all. And so she heard charter, and she thought charter school. So I just sat passively and listened as she was answering these questions. So she thought charter, which she heard that she thought charter school, she doesn't like the idea of charter schools, so she was saying no to that. So that your research could be skewed, just warning, I'm telling you right now. People are going to hear charter, they're going to think charter schools, which then brings me to the greater point, to support what you, the five of you are saying, this thing has got to be, this plebiscite in November about this has got to be really concise, really clear. And if my wife, my own wife can be confused by the, this charter city concept being charter school, I think there's going to be a lot of that. And I, this, the talk from the attorneys to me was making me think that this will never pass by the voters, and even, I just think it should be extremely, extremely clear and concise and short.
Thank you. Anyone else, public comment? This evening?
Moving along.
Okay.
9.1.
We are moving along to item 9.1.